I'd like to call this meeting the order of the Tasswell Town Council. And I'd like to ask you to stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance, followed by the invocation by Reverend Zach Hatch.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and these are the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let's pray.
Pray to God, we are thankful for the day that you've given us, we are thankful for the sunshine, we are thankful for the rain, and we are thankful that you provide exactly what we need. And we ask that you be with us tonight as we meet, we pray that you be with the council as they work to better the life and the community of the place that we love to call home. And we give you thanks for all that will happen tonight in Christ's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Mayor's out of town again this month, so you all get to sit up with me one more time. I would like to call on Sharon Thomas now, she has a special presentation and an update for us on the Tasswell Cinema and Entertainment.
I told you I'd fit you in there.
You're the kid, neither, Roger.
No, you can give me the front, give me the hands up now for you.
Well, we are progressing slowly but surely. What you have in front of you is the seating venue for the new Tasswell Cinema. As you can see, Cinema One and Cinema Two now is going to be non-renovated. Basically, it's just going to be gutted for the interior purposes. New seats, new walls, new carpet, new floors, all of that. The excitement is going to be over here on Cinema Three. That is going to be leased to Cultural Arts of Southwest Virginia. And this is the area that we are going to build a stage in. And as you can see, we are adding on to the building both from the back and to the side. On the side of the building, there's going to be an addition that is going to be 16 by 35. Through that area, starting from the top down, you see the little doors there for the ramp, the unloading ramp, for all the stage props, all that material there. Then you come in, as required by performing arts, you'll have a kitchenette area. Coming on down, you will have the dressing rooms for the women, dressing rooms for the men, and bathrooms in each one. Then as you come on down, the area there will be for the stage props, and back here will be for the green room. Then as you come over, we are adding on to the back of the building, 24 by 50, and that's where we are increasing for the stage so that we can maximize our seating capacity in this. Also, as you can see in the front, you see an overlay. We're planning on putting a mezzanine in Cinema Three. So that will give us an additional 50 seats up on top for the mezzanine. We finally, after deliberating and deliberating, we first was going to make it sort of like childcare. That got rolled out. We first was going to make it into a trampoline park and an arcade. That got rolled out because of the liability insurance. At the time, we could not find anyone that wanted to franchise that. If they didn't franchise it, then the liability cost was way too high. Now, after we finally got this cast in stone, so to speak, there is a gentleman that wants to do a franchise with a trampoline park. But this is what Tasswell Cinema Entertainment will look like.
Good.
Sharon? Yes, ma'am?
It is the Cultural Arts of Southwest Virginia. Is that the Barter Project?
Yes. That's where all the performing arts will be.
Carl, you're still in touch with Barter?
Yes, yes. We're still in touch with Barter. And as a matter of fact, in addition to the financing that we have secured work but have never drawn from with Vasita and all that, with the Cultural Arts of Southwest Virginia, that is a nonprofit organization. So by it being nonprofit, we have also applied for funding through the Tobacco Commission. That application was put in two weeks ago. I got an email yesterday from Sarah Williams, I believe is her name, and Pam Warden, and they're wanting to see the lease and all this stuff, so the application is in process for that as well.
How many seats are in each of these theaters?
150 will be in Cinema Three where the cultural arts is, and then 100 in each of the others. 100 each. Now, and the ones where Cinema One and Cinema Two will be for the movies and the, well, also still, we plan on having the streamlined activities in there, like the things for Super Bowls and, you know, the big NCAA championships, boxings and all that. That will have to be where the screens are, of course. So each one of those will seat 100, and they will have the nice reclining chairs, the laid-back chairs, with the cup holders and the flip tops. Because, we're going to put the flip tops in there because I talked to the health department and all that, and I am going to be able to cater meals from the VIP room down there so we can offer dinner and a movie.
Cool.
Any idea of time for it?
I'm afraid to say.
Do you know when you're going to actually start construction?
Well, actually, I was on the phone again today with Mark Brewer from Empire Salvage. The very front of the building has asbestos. So he has promised me, we were supposed to have it removed in July, and his schedule got delayed. So he told me today that he would be there within the next 10 days to get that asbestos out of there. It was cheaper where it wasn't as, it was more economical to take the asbestos out than it was to cover it up. We had that option, but by the time you change door thresholds and everything else, it's better to just take it out. And then that way we don't have to go with it.
Now, there used to be, I can remember as a kid, there were boxing areas that you could get to up top and watch the movies, that you could rent out for parties or things. Are you still going to?
We're still going to do those. Yes.
I mean, I don't know what they were like since.
Yeah, well, we're going to change all that, to be honest with you. It's going to be Cinema One and Cinema Two, we still have the areas up top where you can look through and then watch a movie.
They were hard to access previously. I remember you could.
It is like the concession stand.
Yeah.
And see, at the very top of it, after a while, after we get going, of course, the state of Virginia has passed a law to where as theaters now can get an ABC license. So if anything happens, that's where the Barter will be, especially with intermissions from the Barter and stuff like that. That will need to be upstairs away from the kids.
Okay, you want to go ahead and say the names for the grand opening?
You tricked me too, but you can have some names.
It's the third time's the charm. Thank you. Really appreciate it. Okay, we'll move on to the approval. Approval of the minutes, I'd like to entertain a motion for the minutes from the July 19. All in favor, say aye. Also, I'd like to entertain a motion for the approval of the financial statements and financial report from July 2019. All in favor? Motion's approved. Thank you. Committee and conference updates include the planning commission committee, which I hear has been quite busy, and Councilmember Brooks is going to tell us a little bit about that.
Well, the majority of the time we spend discussing the bed and breakfast ordinance, which is, apparently, it's being cleaned up. Brad can tell you all about it. He has just sent us an extensive document concerning adjusting the, whatever you call it.
It's chat for 23 design orders, just needs to be cleaned up with regard to special exception, special use. So we're going through the planning commission, looking at basically a menu in the definitions section, kind of going through, tweaking some of the other provisions within the actual chapter that were inconsistent with regard to conditional use versus special use versus special exception.
It's been a meticulous process.
So is this for like the, I can't remember what I'm saying, that people use to like rent out?
Yeah, Airbnb.
So is that, do people do that in this town or? Well, if you, we don't have a specific use for that. If that's something the planning commission would have to go through and determine if it would be something to be considered for anything with R1, R2, R3, V1. Because right now, it's one where it's not there. And our code, our code does provide for the planning commission putting that use in place, but currently, we do not have one that, for that particular use. We have bed and breakfast, but not the Airbnb where you rent out your house, which is a little bit different. Because the bed and breakfast, we have a specific definition for that. We do not have a definition in the town for Airbnb.
See, Airbnb is not necessarily off of food option. So it's, it is.
And it's different than a tourist home type situation where you're renting out rooms. Here, what I understand from Airbnb, you're literally swapping out your house. And we do not have a definition for that currently. The town does not have a definition.
Currently?
Currently, that's the word. Anything?
I mean, I don't think it's a bad thing, but I think, I mean, if it was your neighbor and somebody bringing it and having a huge party, we'd kind of.
And it's definitely something the planning commission may want to consider. What spawned all this was the bed and breakfast question and the conditions, because we did not have a criteria for the planning commission to go through and say, what type of conditions do we want with special use? And then that would look back on other things like hotels, motels. Going out of whatever it might be, you have special use designation with no criteria. And that's what the Tasswell will do.
Anything else?
No, that was pretty much it.
Thank you. Town manager has some updates on a variety of items like sidewalks, the sports complex, and the water sewer.
Okay, up onto each one of those, like sidewalks, I've got like 10. Each one of them takes like 20 minutes, so just taking a breath and sit back. I'm just kidding. Just to give you a little bit of an update on the sidewalk, it was brought to my attention a couple of years back, at previous years and years ago, Maplewood. So we are under construction on Maplewood. If you haven't driven up through there, we probably got maybe 100 yards put in right now, give or take a little bit. The objective is to, before bad weather, make it all the way down to Carlin to some stopping point there. There are some interesting comments and phone calls that I've got since we started the sidewalk. Some of them are good and some of them are absolutely bad about the sidewalk. So football games and things of that nature where they used to park over there. And then you also got the side where, you know, if we were paved streets and still the people fuss, but they want to engulf it. So it doesn't matter what we do, people have input on that. But it's coming along really good, you know, like you said, hopefully before the bad weather hits, we'll be down to Carlin. As long as we can control the water system and other projects, we just pop up out of anywhere. Once that's completed, we will come back to the original goal, which was starting at the intersection of Church Street going all the way down to the western side of National Bank on Main Street. So we were actually going to do that originally. Donnie was already staged up to start that. We moved over there. So we will come back to that section sidewalk once.
What about the sidewalk from like Carlin going down to kind of where it's paved in that sidewalk? Is that still on? That's what we talked about or?
Yeah, Maplewood, Church, I mean, all the main streets. So to answer your question, we can go there next. We don't have.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. I just want to hopefully it's, it's the same thing as like Carlin where it's just striped, but it's paved.
Right. So yeah, we can do it. We can do it. We actually, once we get done with Main Street, anywhere, you know, we can look at it.
What we're going to have to do without to tie that back into Lincoln Chapel and complete?
That was an eight ship grant, and those eight ship grants have not materialized. So we're going to get the walking path put in. Right now, we're going through some ENS issues with the county. The contract has been signed by the board and the town, so before we're ready to go, the ENS issues are going to be another wild iron those out.
What's that?
The roads and the sediment control. We're actually having a look at clean water, ponds, retention, retention. It's great. Anything we try to do looks like we're held up.
But did the state tell us they were going to direct the sidewalk around in front of that?
That's the idea. That was in the eight ship grants.
But wasn't it in the original contract, they were going to sidewalk it?
You know, the whole, we actually know that the whole idea was we were going to have a running lane up there. But after the striping incident, the errors that took place in the striping when they did 61, we've only got that narrow strip. Again, it's paved, but it is marked for running. You know, it's a sidewalk, but it's paved just like Maplewood right now. That sidewalk right there can be.
That's not a sidewalk, that's a shoulder.
Well, it's a, you're right, but it's a, it's a three-foot striped lane for, for the sidewalk, just like Maplewood. And like you're talking about going down toward Harlin. Same thing out there. What we were trying to do was put a sidewalk on the bank and deander that sidewalk all out through there, that we've been unsuccessful with being awarded those eight ship grants today. But even without the eight ship grants, we can still come back in and put a sidewalk up the side of the road right there. So there's a lot of alternatives, and we've got plenty of time to consider now what we want to do. I won't cancel them. I think that's everything we want to. But we, you know, I got a couple of phone calls this week. The reason these things are on here, we're going to finish Maplewood. The objective was to do Main Street after that. Now, if you want to go in a different direction, all you got to do is let me know. And then Brad has brought up the area across, you know, going down Fincastle, so we can, and then, so we can look at that area after that, or we'll have plenty of time between now and then to bring it up again for discussion. If there's any other direction you want to go other than Main Street, obviously, we're on Maplewood, but if there's any other direction you want to go before that, just let me know. Plenty of time. If you have any. Okay, that's all I've got on the side. Just want to kind of give you an update. Want to talk to you about the sports complex a little bit, be sure that we're all on the same page. Shamir is doing the feasibility study. The feasibility study was estimated, I think, to take 10 weeks. Due to school being out and getting in contact with different individuals, it may take a little longer. I can tell you that I'm not rushing. I want a good project. I want a good study, a good solid study when we get it. I don't want anybody to blame it on school being out or school being in. But that study, when it comes back, will show the results of the possibility of building a successful or financially self-sustaining super indoor sports complex in town. The idea, from the beginning, if my memory serves me correct, was to build a facility on the Rainy Lot, David Park, which is one of the biggest reasons for purchasing property. Since that time, we've got calls from different local businesses wanting to temporarily use some of those facilities, and I've worked with them to do so. I'm well aware of that. But the ultimate goal and the direction that I'm going in is I'm targeting a super, I call it super because it sounds good, but an indoor sports complex on that Rainy Lot.
Did we vote again, silly, to do that?
Yeah, you did, but I just want to be sure that everybody's on the same page, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Yes, let's do it.
Okay, so not saying that we're going to start it next week. I'm waiting on the study to come back, and then I'll come back before you on how to proceed with that, sir. Just waiting on that study, and we're all praying, obviously, that we're going to make it. Well, let's talk about water and sewer lines a little bit. The town's accountability in 2012, I can only go back that far for obvious reasons, but the town's accountability hovered around in the low 60s. I've seen it in the 40s, I've seen it in the 50s. Right now, Donnie Pruitt and his team have been able to see those numbers sometime around 75% accountability. So we average about 71, 72. The method of accountability is based on meter readings, also the ability of the water superintendent to estimate how long the leak's been there that we fix. So if we, if we have a big guys or a big water main bust, and it's a hole that big, we have a calculation. If it's cracked around it, we have a calculation. Split the distance, we have a calculation. Again, it's a hedged guess as to how much water has lost, but it goes into the accountability formula. We've been, over the last five years, been aggressive in looking at water rates and sewer rates in order to retain and improve the water and sewer system to where our economic background, our economic structure is going to be there for us. So I, if you will recall, some years back, the water system was paying general fund vehicles and vice versa, public works vehicles, sewer vehicles. The general fund was subsidized in strong times and repaying that due to, due to front account. So we turn them into enterprise funds. Enterprise funds being business accounts, just like some of you run at your own businesses. We turn them into business accounts to where they're more transparent and to where you could tell where the money was going, the revenue that was coming in, and the expenses, they were locked in. So right now, today, you know, six years later, your sewer, your sewer fund is self-sustaining. Your water fund is becoming self-sustaining. Your general fund is obviously self-sustaining. So when we have slow times of the year, and July's a good start to that always, we work off of an LOC, which y'all are very well aware of, line credit. And then when taxes begin to come in and there's a flow, you know, we pay that off every year. We've done that for a number of years. Nothing wrong with that. Majority of the localities in Southwest Virginia operate that way. So we do that in order to avoid raising fees or taxes to some astronomical number that makes it impractical for anybody that, you know, resides in Southwest Virginia. So we're building, we're building the water fund and the sewer fund right now for capital improvement projects. We're building, we've raised rates periodically every year, little by little by little, in order to maintain the water system, in order to work on the water system, in order to improve the sewer plant, in order to do things at the sewer plant and the expenses that we've, that we've put in place at the sewer plant just to get us to where we are today. And, you know, without rehashing, going back and all that stuff, that's a little, that's a little bit of a dark area, but, you know, Donnie's practice in public works, his objective in public works is to take a street or two every year and target that street. So instead of going through there, patching leaks on it, you know, every month or every year or every so often, you know, these replacement water lines. For example, the top of, where Eric Nunn lives at. Not, Richard, Richard Drive, you know, we did all Richardson Drive. We did all Richardson Drive, you know, a couple of years back. So we were up there like every month. Yeah, we were up there like every month, putting bandages on bandages. So Donnie went in there, replaced the whole thing, heading in back sense. We've done that with water meters, we've done that with some of the mains. The objective with the line item that we've got for line replacement is to continue that It'll take years to do. I mean, it'll take a long time to do it, but, you know, you've got a life expectancy of 35 and 40 years on a water line to death. And that's been brought up to me recently, you know, we want to be more aggressive, and I love it. I love that aggressive attitude to want to be more aggressive in the water system. If you look at the expenses in the water system, if you look at the number of employees, if you look at, if you look at the budget you've got, if you look at, you know, we go through it every year, right here, Turbo Meet. I am open to suggestions. You know your budget. You know where it's at. You know when we're raising water rates, and you know what the expenses are. They're right there in your budget. If there's a recommendation that you want to go in, let me know at any time. I'm bringing this up to let you know that we're not just sitting back fixing water leaks because we enjoy doing it. We have a reason for doing it, we have a method for doing it. It's just like paving on Fincastle. I realize that Fincastle needs to be paved. I see the patches on it, and they're going to keep popping up. But I also realize until I get that water main fixed, until I get those ladders fixed, Fincastle's that high on the curb and gutter in someplace. Oh, I can't explain that yet. Until we, until we can get to that, to that stage where we can replace all that up through there, I'm really not going to recommend to cancel, pay Fincastle.
Well, you've done it before in the territory, right?
And we will continue to, and tonight, we're getting ready to go over a million dollars to pay. And I can assure you that all those streets that we're going to pave, he's going to end up sticking that big yellow bucket in them. I can't help that. All right, we, the money, the money to replace water and sewer lines is what we have. It's, it's all we've got. All right, so we, we apply for grants. I mean, we've done close to $30 million in grants in six years. We apply for them. The health department is not, and I quote, is not giving out money for water lines. DEQ is not, and I quote, not giving out money for sewer lines. They, they gave us $3.1 million for sewer plant upgrade. Y'all are all aware of that. We are very, very aggressive with grants. Robby got here last week, we're going to talk about one next month. We're very, very aggressive. But I'm extremely open to suggestions. So I want to work with Cancel to accomplish any of your goals that you have. I want to go any route that you want to go in. My objective is to make, you know, the work of Cancel is to grow the town. But I can tell you to, to replace all the water and sewer lines and contract. But I can tell you to replace all the water and sewer lines and contract that out, I mean, you're up over two hundred million dollars and this town can't afford that. Not at one big bank. So unless I'm missing something, and it won't be the first time, by the way, just let me know at any time if there's something out there that we can look at a different way. Donnie's aggressive, I can tell you now, he's aggressive. He's replaced more culverts in this town in the last five years than has been in the last fifty. We've done Thompson Street, we've done Fairgrounds, we just did behind the courthouse, these are culverts that were falling in, crumbling in, and, you know, I can, Maplewood, he hit us, what, two years ago? He's very aggressive.
North Tassel, they already took new water lines in, right?
North Tassel?
Yeah. They cut it in.
They did some.
So, or.
They only did some of them and that's a million dollar bond that we're still making payments on.
Even when he asked for that?
Yeah, we're still making payments on that, so. But no, they didn't. They actually, they actually did some replacement, but what could have been done was not in contract, so that's the reason he's still digging up Finn Castle.
I guess with this plan, too, we're hitting the primary replacement line, primary replacement line that is the highest traffic roads first, which require the most stress.
That and where we go back, like this twelve bis main running down to hand, Donnie's been, you know, after that twelve bis main, we continuously put bandages on it. So we're very much aware of the idea, we're very much sensitive to it and trust me, I'd rather see an excavator out there digging any day and replacing some and letting this community see construction going on and not only blowing these holes up in the ground, but we've got a reason for that. And most of it revolves around funding. So any questions for me? I cut that down by about forty-five minutes. Why? Place Mayor Monmouth to talk.
Thanks. On the unfinished business agenda tonight, we have the update on the bridge project at Hardee's and Todd, you're gonna share with us on that.
If you'll recall, about three years ago, we were awarded, it was like seven million dollars in bridge replacement. So the one at Hardee's is next up, the construction date is estimated to be August twenty-sixth, so we're just a couple of weeks away, a week, a couple of weeks away. Pre-constructions in Bristol has already been held in Bristol, so from Vin Bolt all the way down to Hardee's will be blocked off and be a little uncomfortable for a while. So I just want to give you another heads up, that project is getting ready to take off. So that's a complete replacement of that bridge right there at Hardee's and then Donnie and I were working on the other bridge out there on Riverside, by the way, today with VDOT, so they're starting to pop rounds at all these bridges and replacements. So it's gonna be a business, next three or four years, there'll be a lot of construction going on, bridge replacement. Again, keep in mind, that's none of your local dollars thanks to grants. That's due to an aggressive staff working grants on infrastructure. Another thing you'll find out about me is we concentrate on infrastructure, the water, sewer line, roads and pavement, all the other, I call them, all the other grants out there for the more cosmetic, we don't spend a whole lot of time. It's a good area for talent today or some committee to get together. That's all we've got.
Okay, as we moved into new business, we needed to discuss the loan and I believe that, what you're gonna share with us?
As you're aware, we were approved, a little over three million dollars from DEQ for the sewer plant upgrade. That contract upon Cancel's approval was signed a week or so ago. At closing, at closing, when we close on that ten million dollars, it's gonna be a year from now, it'll be next September of twenty, but between now and that closing date, there will be almost a million dollars of expenses in engineering, design, and I need some preliminary funding. So when we get to that closing date, which is in September of two thousand twenty, a hundred percent of that will be paid back in payment. Okay, so I want to be clear, you know, we're looking for interim finance, but it will be paid back one hundred percent in September unless that date changes for two thousand twenty. I just need permission from Cancel to do what I've gotta do anyway, but it does involve a lot of money, so what we'll do is we'll solicit local, we're gonna look at, we're gonna look at RANs, we're gonna look at revenue notes, of course, anything local government does a revenue note, but we'll try to stay away from the bonding side of it. But we'll look at all the local banks, each one of them, we'll get a letter from the town this week, looking for numbers, we're looking at pure, you know, numbers and rates. I just need a vote from Cancel to proceed, it's something I've gotta do anyway. You know, we've got two LOCs that might cover, but the reason for those LOCs is they'll cover us for all the reasons that you listed, so.
I'll leave that alone. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And that takes us to the pavement.
Okay, if you'll recall, at the last Cancel meeting, we were again notified of some de-allocation funds for paving. Those funds were applied for a number of years ago and they were turned down, the application for that fund for paving was turned down, but due to some good communication with VDOT and, you know, being a team player with them and projects and doing the things that they require us to do and just working with them, we were able to be awarded a hundred percent of the streets that were turned down a number of years ago. The bad part about it is I only have a hundred thousand dollars for paving in budget. So I've got a million dollar grant, it's a fifty-fifty match, so we put five hundred in VDOT matching. But I was able to work with VDOT, Robin made a lot of phone calls and I talked to WNL and I talked to Robin's group. WNL is willing to do all the paving now and they understand that until July of two thousand twenty, they won't get fifty percent of it, so it's almost four hundred thousand dollars if they're saying they're buying it, as long as we go on the contracts and they'll do all that paving right now.
They charge them interest?
No.
All right, now, they quote, notice here, the rate's eight dollar a yard.
Well, that's just my estimate, this is not being, no, no, I have not bid it out. I've actually got a pre-bid conference tomorrow morning right here.
Well, I thought you said something about last month or something, you said the current rate is nine dollars a yard.
Well, eight dollars, we did some paving, two years ago, it's six fifty. So eight dollars just gives me a, but these are all my numbers. What this does is just give me an idea of where I'm at and we add streets if I'm loved and if I'm high, we take them off. But my question to Cancel, and I don't mean to put you on the spot, I'm going to, we can pave a hundred, I've got a hundred thousand dollars for paving, I can turn that into August of two hundred thousand dollars and do two hundred thousand dollars on the paving this year, plus I got a hundred and sixty thousand dollars to pave off from the post office. Is it where, what, Don, from the post office thing? From Farrell Gas all the way to the town limits, so it goes all the way out to Hager. That's a, that's a hundred percent funding, by the way. So that was for, I'll do that this year, plus I can do two hundred thousand. The rest of it, they can leave with their paving and come back next year and do it.
Will we lose that money?
No, no, I've worked out, as long as I start it at nineteen, they'll allow me to roll over the next physical year.
But you're saying you don't let it go at all?
They'll do every bit of it now.
That's right. Waiting for the rest of it.
But what'll happen is next year, you're gonna handle budget four hundred thousand dollars that you're not gonna see. So we're doing it now.
It's our expense.
Yeah, we're doing it now, pay later. It may be a little political for you, I mean, totally up to y'all, I can raise, I can get the paper out of town, have them come back next year, or I can go and knock it out right now and do no paving next year, but you'll pay for it next year. So do you have a preference? Don't mean to put you on the spot, but I can do a bit of dollars for paving now.
What's your preference?
I like going and getting it done right now and I don't worry about next year, next year when it gets here. I can budget four hundred thousand dollars, I have no problem with that. I can budget that and pay them next year.
Well, everybody likes immediate gratification.
Yeah, I feel like right now, I could use, yeah. So if it's okay with Cancel, I'll just, we'll go ahead and do the paving and we'll work with them to get them paid, paid after July.
That's all the streets?
That's all the streets on this list, if the numbers.
Could I hear a motion to that effect? So is there a second?
Second.
Is there a discussion?
Wait a minute.
I can go down these streets if you'd like and let you know.
Now, you said something about the Finn Castle, it's gotta be.
Finn Castle is not on here.
Yeah.
He's not talking about paving that because he wants to, he wants to fix the water stuff.
It's sort of rough now, it's just like a washboard going out through to the cemetery, I think it's where it goes back to normal, from Tassell Avenue, you know, to that cemetery.
And that's the water problem.
Is that the waterfront right there or is it not?
Every street in town is a water problem, every one of them in town, the water system is antiquated. But when I pay Finn Castle, it costs a lot of money to do that, that's true. So I'm just saying, give Donnie a chance.
Fix it up.
To fix it, put a water line in, put a drain system in, new sidewalks, curb and gutter, then that.
Then we may not have to make it up.
Then you don't have to blow it up.
He's probably, he's probably still gonna have to do patches and things like that.
It's actually, I'm not saying, you know, this is actually where the bad spot is, not.
We'll patch, we'll keep working.
I don't like the zigzag, like zipper going in. But my guy.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Thank you. Motion is passed. Budget amendment.
Okay, I don't know, I had a line item for Cancel, for capital improvement, for economic development, had an economic development line item that Cancel uses for different events and for some reason, I was the only dad out there, so y'all couldn't do it. We've got some capital improvement money that was put aside as a catch-all line item and it has forty-one thousand dollars in it, I'm just, I just need to get some money put back over there for obvious reasons, so we're recommending to amend it by twenty thousand dollars. That's gonna leave you a balance of twenty-one, five fifty-seven in the capital improvement line item, it has no, it's just a catch-all line item.
Do I hear a motion to that effect?
Second motion.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody have any, I don't know if it makes you say aye, but I guess in front of you, is that, would you like to say aye? Anywhere?
No.
Okay. Retiree insurance discussion.
Okay. Back in two thousand fourteen of May, we adopted, or Cancel adopted, a resolution offering our retirees health insurance. I know everybody remembers that very much. At that time, we needed to, there was lots of discussion, but it's not clarified in a minute. We had talked about when they leave, whatever policy they have, that's what they continue with when they leave, up until the age of Medicare. But we did not clarify, once you leave, you have that policy, if you drop someone from your policy, they can never be added back and no one else can be added to the policy ever remains, whoever you dropped is dropped. And then if you drop your policy at all, you can't pick it back up. We had those discussions and they were not in minutes, they need to be clarified for any retiree that happens to come to retire and they need some clarification on it.
So the others, the idea with that was when they retire, you knew the cost of it and it would never change. So they can't go and add five people to it later on and run the cost of insurance up when it's not budgeted.
Most of those are here anywhere.
Yeah. Two covered eighty percent, town's covered eighty percent for the employee.
Yeah. What we, you know, we've checked with all the other towns, they all do the same thing. But we just needed in minutes, I've had some recent complications and some clarification we just needed. So again, again, what we need for the record and Al is filling in for laying in by the way, thank you, but this will do what we did years ago, but somehow or another, it was just a missed in minutes.
Now, I have a question, because like the Tassell County, it looks like the county's plan is that the family, the spouse or family member had to be on the policy for a year prior to retirement. Do we have something like that?
Ours is five and ten.
Okay.
So it depends on, yeah, ours is actually, you have to be here for, before you can do it.
Okay. It's senior service for fifty-five of five years.
It's five years.
If you're fifty-five, yes.
But how long does, to their sixty?
Sixty-five. They'll cover their spouse, now, and once they get to that age of sixty-five and they can't be on the policy, well, their spouse will be dropped.
They'll cover their spouse.
As long as they're old.
As long as they retire with that spouse.
Oh, well.
So, this is the reason they were brought up, by the way, okay?
What about the children?
If you retire with a family plan, it'll carry. If you had two children, it'll carry those two children, but you cannot add your own or you can't get, unfortunately, if you have a divorce and it changes, you change the policy, if you get remarried.
You won't cut it?
No, because, yeah.
Okay.
If my wife tells them, if they still have kids, they're like, oh, they shouldn't be retiring. That's right. If that retiree decides to back off, let's say their children grow up, they don't need family plan and they just go to individual, that's where they stay till they're sixty?
Yes. Even if they have a good point, good example, so you can reduce it.
You just can't go up.
But you cannot go up, obviously.
Yeah.
So we just need you to approve that.
Make a motion to make that.
Yeah.
Now, second, that motion?
Is there any discussion?
And again, this is the second time we've done this, we just, the minutes when they were recording then, it just wasn't.
We're getting it right this time. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passed. And that brings us to the twenty nineteen Virginia Municipal League Innovation Award Application and Documentation. Todd, maybe, but I'm not, if not, I'll know.
Well, I had lots of, I had Dr. Moll's a lot of input and actually Susan did the video for it. I'm gonna show the video, the whole packet is in there.
Yes, check that.
Just say a few questions and then.
What it is, VML offers awards across the Commonwealth at the VML conferences for different categories that you want to apply for. Well, one of their categories is historical restoration, is that correct?
It's not development, it's got historical.
It's got historical under economic development, so this is what we have submitted and hopefully we will get recognized at VML conferences. So, and we were restricted to what, minute and?
We're restricted to five minutes. She did a good minute and thirty, and we got everything in there, so she did awesome.
There was also an application that was filled out with a lot of questions on it. Did Dr. Mullins, like Mayor Mullins, help us out with it? Matter of fact, probably did the whole thing.
He did. We did. I don't think anything needed to be added because it's perfect, the way he gave it to me, so.
Yeah, okay. But thank you, Susan and Al Roden for taking that ball around. And if we don't win, it's up to Ron. And Emily, we're going to be there to make sure.
Cheers.
I didn't want to go to the media and not win. Okay, thank you very much. Is there anything else?
I have one thing. Can I, can I say please, from a message from Tasswell today? We are very grateful to the town of Tasswell and the staff and everybody who's worked so hard on fixing our wall. The, the painting for the mural is complete, and so we're getting ready to put, put it up. It's going to probably be towards the end of September before we can have our grand opening celebration. But everybody will be able to look at it bit by bit as it goes up. So anyway, we just wanted to thank you, the, the town has been so helpful, and I, I hope it'll make a difference in the overall aesthetic of the town. But thank you.
There's also a report that's in your information package of your, your Cancel meeting on Tasswell today. For sure, take time to read that, you're going to change this pretty.
Yeah, there's a lot going on. A lot going on.
It is, they have been revived.
Next meeting, Monday?
Monday, next Monday, there's going to be a meeting at the front porch. Everybody is, please come if you possibly can. It's going to sort of reintroduce the organization and there's, there really is a lot to talk Plus there'll be snacks and refreshments.
Will be there. Did anyone sign up for con, those, at this time?
I just want to make a rant or something. For Christmas this year, I'd like to bring up an issue for North Tasswell area of putting Christmas decorations through North Tasswell.
Okay.
Brighten that place up.
We are actually working with two different peoples on Main Street, and some of the Christmas lights on Main Street we did. So we, we're probably going to have some extra lights that we can, obviously we don't have enough to go all the way out Riverside, but we'll call it AEP. And either we got to contract it or, or we got to pay AEP, you know, that they'll have to put those receptacles in, that's fifty dollars, and that's what it used to be. I'm not sure what they are now, but that's what it used to be. And I'll tell you, when I say used to be, I've not known any since I've been here. So I don't know how much they charge us now, but I can tell you one time, it was fifty dollars a year. But we will, we will take the rate down, we can't brush it up over there.
We also salvaged the electric train lights from the display of the fairgrounds. They'll be on the fence at the train station this Christmas.
That brightens the North Tasswell area.
I've also had someone suggesting to me to have the Christmas parade go a different route instead of going to the high school, that mainly try to incorporate maybe down Tasswell Avenue and into North Tasswell as well.
Okay.
To try to bring the whole thing together. I don't know the feasibility of that, but that was a suggestion that somebody gave to me.
I'll let the committee know.
I did that on Veterans Protection, many people.
Right, yeah, I don't know if it would.
I'll let the committee know.
Yeah, it would be good to see North Tasswell lit up, you know.
We'll do one time.
We'll do what we can and be sure we.
I want to see it.
And we lit them up to the two and a half million dollars for the train station restorations.
Yeah.
That's a stop.
Pretty good investment. Well, and that would be, you know, decorate the train station, get something.
Draw attention to you.
Yeah. But it might not work with re-routing trash.
That's the problem.
Yeah.
Stating all that.
I think, you said it's possible we could do that. Oh, you can't speak, right? I understand. Oh, the intersections, that, oh. How long the parade, we do a lot of intersections, you guys really, you gotta cover every place where cars come out.
And where's everybody going to park when they start?
Right.
We'll fix that as well.
I'll give it to the committee, they'll evaluate it.
They'd have to do some creative thinking. Anything else? I would also like to offer that the town has received a grant for love works at the Tasswell train station, and we will have a second love works in our community at the train station before Christmas. So there's something else in North Tasswell.
Oh, love does run down there?
That's right. Okay, anyone else? At this point, I need a motion for us to move into executive session for consultation with legal counsel regarding specific legal matters and prospective business and personnel.
So move it.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.